Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully request to suspend the financial report for 2023 for this month, just given to timing for study session so that you don't need to return into study session, and would request permission to have Director Leiter come back next month and provide the November and October financial reports, if that would be agreeable to council. The documents, of course, are available in the packet.
Yes, we got those.
And you can contact us at any time about that.
No problem.
All right, thank you. The Monday, November 20th, 2023 City of Vandelia Council meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, if I may, I'd like to quickly amend our agenda and include Resolution 23 R-76.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Follak to amend the agenda tonight for adding Resolution 23-R-76. Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember first.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs. Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes of November 6th, the council meeting minutes of November 6th. Are there any comments, questions, or additions? Being none, they stand approved. That brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards, where we have the Vandelia Division of Fire Distinguished Citizens Award.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I will invite Fire Marshal Jacobs to come up and ask our invitees to come up and who are being honored for him to make this award presentation.
Good evening, Council and City Manager Lent. Chief Follak, unfortunately apologizes because he has his regrets. He had a personal commitment. He was unable to be here this evening. He has blessed me with the privilege to be able to recognize these gentlemen today. In the early morning hours of July 29th, 2023, while traveling to the Dayton International Airport, Mr. Don and his son Cameron Decuna witnessed a vehicle traveling north on the airport access road, lose control, and plunge into a large retaining pond off to the side of the road. The pair stopped, jumped over the fence along the roadway, and ran to the side of the pond, where Mr. Decuna then noted that the vehicle was being submerged and the victim had not been removed. Being the only occupant of the vehicle and struggling to get out of the car, Mr. Decuna swam significant distance through the pond to pull the victim from the car and bring him to shore. Mr. Cameron Decuna then made the 911 call and entered the water to assist his father with removing the victim to the shore. Police fire and EMS crews arrived very shortly after to help continue their rescue and tend to the victim. There is absolutely no question that the actions taken by Mr. Don and Cameron Decuna saved the life of this individual. He was found on the shore exhibiting significant signs of near drowning. If these gentlemen had not stopped, called 911, and entered the water to rescue the victim, he would have most likely been drug underwater in his vehicle and drowned. Therefore, the Division of Fire would like to recognize Mr. Don and Cameron Decuna for heroes of the day, for exhibiting great courage and compassion for someone in need, and for taking actions that undoubtedly saved the driver's life. Mr. Don and Cameron Decuna are receiving the Division of Fire's Civilian Medal of Honor for their heroic efforts on July 29th, 2023.
Yeah, good thing it wasn't you.[351.13][351.13][applause]
All right, thank you. Next, we have the Employee of the Year Award. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. All right. Can I ask Mr. Wells, Mr. Mastrino, and their families that they've brought to come up here? We've got our directors, Clerk, and Crone, who have submitted this nomination, and I'd just like to present to you and talk to you a little bit about what these individuals have done for the city to merit being distinguished as the Employees of the Year. And so, congratulations to both Chris and Rudy. Chris is one of our inspectors, and Rudy is our Facility Superintendent, and they're in separate departments. One's in public service, one is in park and rec. And we're lean and mean at the City of Vandelia, and so we work together. We work across departments. And so, Mr. Mastrino, Mr. Wells, earned this recognition by providing exceptional public service to the residents of Vandelia throughout our $8.9 million Facilities Infrastructure project. And so, ESG, Keith Alquett, is here today, and so thank you for coming, Keith, to witness this. This project included extensive assessment, research, engineering, construction, management, troubleshooting, and that wasn't just in the municipal building. It was in the Justice Center, the Bruce Suker Vandelia Recreation Center, the Senior Center, Parks Maintenance Building, the Sports Complex, other facilities. The work ranged, it's really complex, right? From commercial heating, ventilation, air conditioning, duct cleaning, demolition, removal of superfluous equipment, energy efficiency upgrades, window screening, exterior lighting on the Justice Center, mechanicals, controls, repairs, and various types of roof replacement. It spanned to include value-added light-up street signs and light poles that were added to the Sports Complex walking path. I don't know about you all, but that is such a wide breadth that it absolutely required on-the-job learning, even by some of our most experienced and best employees. In the case of the Justice Center and the Rec Center, the roofs and mechanicals were original to the buildings. The air handler at City Hall in this building was 50 years old. The roof was leaking above the basketball court in the Rec Center. The air handling system never quite worked as designed in the Aquatic Center. And the Public Safety Specialists at one point were dispatching in a communications center that was 95 degrees in July 2021 because our rooftop units kept failing. And these are the guys who day or night responded, always. As staff, we're thankful for the city council's investment in the maintenance of our facilities, and we're thankful for Chris and Rudy's work product over two and a half years. Somebody hit mute their mic. It isn't, are you guys all muted? I'm guessing it was me. Okay, that's a total bummer, because I really, I said, I gotta have the handheld here. Darn it. The, I can tell you that throughout this project, Mr. Wells and Mr. Mastrino worked through the fine details. They worked to leverage savings and to ensure that the City of Vandelia got the best deal, the best service, and the most appropriate equipment with budget limitations in mind. They exhibited active and on-the-job learning that I hope is a model for all of us to emulate. This project was extremely detailed and complicated, as it spanned many city departments and facilities. Mr. Mastrino and Mr. Wells accepted and welcomed ownership of tough problems that other people didn't have solutions for. So, tag, you're it. While providing solutions in support of our fellow public servants, they managed the city, they managed and represented the city in this organization-wide project. And it would be easy to have, it was easy for me, as city manager, to have complete confidence in them, and the entire time because of their commitment to succeeding. They've embodied truly the spirit of being a top-tier suburb through top-tier municipal services by protecting the public's investment in our facilities. They leverage the expertise of the Energy Savings Group, make no mistake, there are third parties who have to work on these things. But in no case, in no case, did they blindly hand over this low-frequency, high-risk, high-expertise project to a third party and walk away. Mr. Mastrino and Mr. Wells, along with our departmental staff and our teammates in Development and Engineering Services and Park and Rec and all the other departments, went through the specifications line by line. There are people, probably outside of government, who would say that this facility's infrastructure project was not glamorous, and they would be right. These gentlemen performed at a level 10 when no one was watching, because that's how they serve, and that's who they are. I'm almost done. Having a well-maintained facility is easy to take for granted, and the cost is dear when we line it up against our core operations that are more visible to the public during budget time. This project was purposeful. The project was urgent. It was important. These gentlemen tackled hard, complicated, and esoteric project components that needed to be done in support of our entire city organization. In fact, in working to enhance our infrastructure and efficiencies, they worked with ESG and LJB to develop a citywide maintenance plan so that we can better forecast our capital needs and timelines to prevent this type of expansive project again. The service of Mr. Wells and Mr. Mastrino, over the course of this multi-year project, goes well above and beyond their job descriptions. There is no doubt that we are in a better position to serve our residents, corporate citizens, and visitors because of their effort.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on real quick, because I don't want her escape, and I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but I want to give recognition to Mrs. Becky Wells in the back of the room. Because Mrs. Wells has, and I don't know if she's done it prior to this year, but I took notice of it this year, but she has volunteered her time, and dare I say, expertise in planting of the planters here at the municipal building and the Sports Complex, Rec Center, throughout the summer. And I just want to recognize, I know I said this before sometime, I don't know, I'm sure Rudy got the message back to you, but since you are here, I wanted to recognize you and thank you for your time and energy for those. Thank you.[913.97][913.97][applause]
All right, thank you. All right, next, we have Chris Mackey, the Community Impact and Engagement Manager for Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Miami Valley, is going to give us a presentation.
Good evening, and what a great evening to be here. Thank you very much. So, again, Chris Mackey with Big Brothers Big Sisters, we're a nonprofit mentoring organization, serves around 400 youth in Green, Miami, Montgomery, and Preble Counties. Next slide, please. Whenever I talk about Big Brothers Big Sisters, I talk about Kevin and Stephen. Several years back, I became a mentor for two brothers. Their names, not their real names, are Kevin and Stephen. And these two brothers, somebody, I don't like my presentation, I guess.[968.13][968.13][laughter]
It's the little brother.
So, these two brothers have been through a lot. Their family was evicted from their home. Prior to that, they had a lot going on in the neighborhood where they lived, they had a lot going on at school, and the brothers responded to all of this in different ways. And especially, the younger brother, I wanted to talk briefly about, this young man had a lot of issues in terms of self-confidence. He internalized a lot of issues, and so lacked self-confidence, was kind of a quiet kid, wasn't very talkative when I met with him at first. But over time, what teachers and counselors said to me was, they noticed the difference in how he talked, how he interacted, how he expressed himself when we met. He'd talk about stuff he liked. He loves anime. I don't know a thing about anime, but he loves it. Talk about stuff going on in his life that was good, stuff that was not so good. And I do hope that as this young man, as these two brothers grow up into adulthood, that these mentorships will have been beneficial to them. But I can say to all of you that this has been a rewarding opportunity for me, to get back to the community, make a difference in the life of a young person. Next slide, please. Big Brothers Big Sisters creates and supports one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and the promise of youth. And at Big Brothers Big Sisters, our vision, and I like our vision a lot, is that all youth achieve their full potential. We want kids to be successful in life. Next slide, please. We go about doing this through two mentoring programs. One I'll talk about this evening is our community-based program. The community-based program matches adults 21 and up with youth who are 7 to 14. They do fun, safe, inexpensive activities in the community while focusing on goals. Goals that can be as simple as introducing a little to a new hobby, and as profound as helping a little focus on career goals, life goals, graduating high school. As far as who the littles are in our program, they're ages 7 to 14, they're in our four-county service area, and they're kids who come from varying backgrounds and experiences. Some kids, I always say, are part of a large family, parents are guardians of that. Little feel that having an additional positive one-to-one mentor would be beneficial. And then, some kids have been through a lot in their young lives. Next slide, please. This is data from kids on our waitlist. I'll go through this quickly, but 63% of these kids come from households that make less than $30,000 annually. 5% come from households that have or had an incarcerated parent. About 50% of these kids have dealt with a traumatic experience in their life. And about 49%, I'm sorry, about 40% are dealing with some type of a mental health issue. 14% of these kids, seven of these kids come from military families, and about 75% of these kids are little brothers. We always have a need for mentors of all kinds, big brothers, big sisters. We've got a huge need for big brothers. Next slide, please. As far as who bigs are, bigs are first and foremost, safe. Youth safety is the absolute priority at Big Brothers Big Sisters. Along with that, we want everybody to be safe in the programs. Bigs are consistent. We do ask for your commitment from everybody who is in our mentoring programs. We ask for that commitment, not only because some of the kids of ed adults come in and out of their lives, but we ask it because it takes time to build that positive mentorship. Bigs are trained, and they're supported by Big Brothers Big Sisters staff. And bigs are not replacement parents or guardians, they're not saviors. We're not trying to save these kids from themselves, save these kids from their home environments. And bigs don't have to have an advanced degree in social work, or to be a licensed therapist to be a big. They just need to be a member of the community who wants to make a difference in the life of a young person. Next slide, please. We do quickly have an enrollment process. It includes an application, an interview. During the interview, we work to find out what bigs and potential littles are interested in so that we can match them based on those similar interests, similar personalities, similar geography. We do multi-level background checks and reference checks on bigs, again, to make sure that it's going to be a safe experience for everybody involved. We have training, and then we work to match the big and the little. Next slide, please. Just mentioned kind of how we match bigs and littles. We do have a focus on fun, safe, and especially inexpensive activities. We don't want this experience to be, to cost too much for bigs or for the families of littles, but we want them to be able to do fun activities, like going to get a cup of coffee, get some ice cream, going to the park, playing some basketball, playing a board game. We do focus on goals during the course of these mentorships. I mentioned that before, but we try and focus on academic, social, behavioral goals. And then, all of our matches are one-to-one, one big to one little, and they're at least one year. Next slide, please. As far as the benefits of Big Brothers Big Sisters, this comes from national data. 46% of littles said they avoided drugs as a result of having a mentor. 90% said they had better grades as a result of having a mentor. And 86% said they had reduced depressive symptoms as a result of having a mentor. I always point out this last one, because there are a lot of kids who are dealing with mental health issues right now. Having that additional positive person in their corner can be really beneficial for them. And then, finally, I can attest to this fact, we want this mentorship to be rewarding for the mentor as well as the mentee, and it is a rewarding experience. Next slide, please. So, I have a specific ask as far as coming in front of this council and speaking to everybody here. We have a young man on our waitlist. He's 11 years old, he lives in the Vandelia area. This is a great kid. He is interested in coding, he took a speed reading course over the summer, he's interested in esports, and especially, his career goal is to open his own bakery. So, he's getting into cooking right now, very interested in that. This is a future member of the community who could give back in terms of providing a new business for the Vandelia area or the greater Dayton area. And so, I do ask that everyone's here, consider becoming a mentor for a young person, and specifically, possibly becoming a mentor for this young person. And I also ask that you share this information. I'm happy to provide digital versions of this flyer. I have paper copies to you all about this young man. But we are, right now, we got 36 kids on our waitlist, including this young man. And so, please share information about Big Brothers Big Sisters and mentoring with folks you know who might make a difference, want to make a difference in the life of a young person. Because as we say, kids in our community have a lot of potential. And at Big Brothers Big Sisters, we defend that potential. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Does council have any questions or comments?
What's the general time commitment per month? I mean, do you meet your little brother weekly or bi-weekly, or what's the general accepted practice, I guess?
Sure. So, it translates out to about an hour a week. It's four to six hours a month, so two meetings. So, and the other thing that we do try and do when we're matching potential bigs and littles is to try and match people based on schedule. So, if it's convenient to meet weekday evenings, or if it's convenient to meet weekends, we try and accommodate that schedule. But it really isn't a lot of time to make a big difference in the life of a young person.
One last question. I was curious, as a big, are you able to get involved with his schooling or with his teachers, or is that something that's left unto the parent, or is you, as a big, can take an interest in what he or she is doing in school?
So, we definitely encourage along those lines of having goals. If the parent or guardian wants there to be academic goals and doing homework, that's one thing that bigs can do, if that's what everyone wants to do. And I did casework prior to being in this position. Those mentorships where parents and guardians and bigs were on the same page and did focus on things like helping a little with homework and being successful in school were the most beneficial mentorships. So, hopefully answered that question, but yes, there is that possibility.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1542.82][1542.82][applause]
All right, and we do have some exciting city business to take care of. Specifically, the City Manager's Report's coming up next, and this is usually a time when, you know, people, if they don't want to stay for the whole meeting, they can...
Now's a good time to leave.
The City Manager's Report clears the room.[1564.01][1564.01][laughter]
Congratulations, Chris.
All right, we've got about 10 people left, so we'll go ahead and continue with the meeting. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So, if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Spurgeon, 777 North Edge Drive. I had a good experience this week with the city. I had a refrigerator delivered, and that was such an ordeal. You got to get the old one out, get the new one in, and then, of course, the ice machine's got to hook up to the water, and so the repair guy was there, and, "Do you know where your main water shut-off is?" I said, "No, I have no idea." So, I called the city and got connected with the Public Works, and they were going to send somebody out, and they were going to be there in like 10 minutes. So, I really appreciate that, you know, the proactive, you know, feedback, you know, so, I mean, I just really appreciate that. I mean, I never expected that. I thought I'd be kind of, but, and as it turned out, we really didn't need that person to come, and they figured it out. So, anyway, really, we really didn't need the water shut-off. But, you know, I just wanted to pass that along, so, anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we'll go on to the City Manager's Report, where we have some information items.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. In the blue letter, I included a farewell Amber Open House. We'll say farewell to Amber and congratulate her on her appointment to be the City Manager of West Carrollton. That's at Tuesday, Tuesday, November 28th, noon to 2:00 PM in the VRC Special Events Room, and so you, of course, are all invited, invited to attend that if you would like. The My Vandelia Magazine will start to arrive in homes around November 29th. I've shared with you an online version, and we've put that online version out to our residents as well via social media, and those will start to arrive. Leaf collection, of course, ends on December 5th. Of course, we know those oak trees are still holding on to some of those. The reason for that timeline, and we're really aggressive on the front end, is if we have a snow or ice event, those are the same trucks that we have to convert over. We're really hoping for good and mild weather, and if that's the case after December 5th, we believe that we'll be able to make some additional passes, and so we'd encourage our residents to keep pushing those out, and we will make some sort of public correspondence about that at that time. City offices will be closed on Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. The Rec Center will be open Thanksgiving Day from 7:00 AM until noon for the fitness area, gym, track, only. The Rec Center... The rec center will resume regular hours on Friday, November 24th. Let's see here, our Christmas tree lighting and holiday market will take place on December 3rd, and at the rec center, kind of 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., and there's a bunch of information that's included in your packet, it'll be similar to the prior years with a lot of events going on there, and so there's no fee to attend, all are welcome. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. We have no hold business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 23-R-74, Mr. McDonald by title only.
A resolution citing forth the intention to appropriate an aerial easement over certain land for public purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Sorry about that, Your Honor, please stand by, got to get my notes here. We've reached a settlement agreement with all the property owners needed for right-of-way acquisition to accommodate the Vandelia Bike Way Connector Project, except for the CSX Railroad. Our right-of-way consultant performed property appraisals of all the properties in question, which were reviewed by a third-party and fair-market valuations, which were given for the right-of-way requested. They were able to reach a reasonable agreement with all the property owners. For us to move forward and to acquire the easement through appropriations, we're required to approve a resolution for the intent to appropriate, so that we can move forward with the acquisition. To keep the project on schedule, the right-of-way has to be certified in January through ODOT. I'm requesting that we approve the resolution for the intent to appropriate this evening.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-74 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 23-R-74 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-75.
Resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the continued contract with Motorola Solutions to provide maintenance and service for the Spillman software for the Division of Police.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Vandelia Division of Police purchased the Motorola Solutions Spillman software package in 2018 for our computer-aided dispatch, records management system, and mobile report writing. The Spillman software is utilized for electronic criminal offense reports, evidence management, traffic crash reports, statistical data, crime tracking, and records management. The 2023 annual service and maintenance agreement is $50,678.88. There was $52,965 in the budget for the annual maintenance agreement, so it is below budget. Motorola Solutions continues to provide updates to the software and support that could not be provided by a third-party vendor. I'm requesting that competitive bidding be waived and that we continue to contract with Motorola Solutions to provide maintenance and service for the Spillman software.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-75 as presented.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 23-R-75 as presented. Are there any comments?
A quick question, Mr. Went, and I'm just curious, or Chief, how did we get the budgetary number, since it's a sole-source provider, and then come in underneath it?
We take what the previous year's budget is and we bump it up by an approximate percent what we estimate it should be, and use it, fortunately, use it pretty close to what that is.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. At the beginning of the meeting, we amended the agenda to add Resolution 23-R-76. Mr. McDonald?
Resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with the Vandelia Professional Firefighters Association, Local 3519 IAFF.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This resolution authorizes the City Manager to enter into an agreement with the Vandelia Professional Firefighters Association, Local 3519 IAFF, for a three-year contract.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 23-R-76. Second.
Who made the second? I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 23-R-76 as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no ordinances in their first reading, however, we do have one ordinance in its second reading, that being Ordinance 23-30.
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolution as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will just say, I won't say it better than the law director said it about the purpose of this. This is done each year generally as a housekeeping matter.
All right, thank you, and since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing, can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 23-30 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Ordinance 23-30 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. We have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions, where we have a variance request for a front yard fence at 3715 Wise Road. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Sunbelt Rentals, has requested a variance to allow the construction of a front yard fence for the property located at 3715 Wise Road. The purpose of this request is to allow a fence to be constructed beyond the front building line in a non-residential district. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval with one condition, which is that perimeter landscaping is added in the front of the fence per city code section 1232 dot 05 C2.
All right, thank you, can I have a motion?
There are a move that we approve the variance at Wise Road.
With condition?
With the stated conditions.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fars that we approve the variance request at 3715 Wise Road with the conditions that have been mentioned. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Council, you've had an oppor, excuse me, Council, you've had the opportunity to review the Civil Service Meeting Minutes of October 6th, the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting Minutes of October 25th, and the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of October 10th. Are there any comments? All right, next we have the October 2023 bill listing in the amount of $3,481,861.82, along with the October expenses over $50,000, and the October purchase card detail in the amount of $20,790.59. Any comments? All right, and that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin with Mr. McDonald.
I have nothing.
Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just request an executive session for the purpose of considering the compensation and employment of a public employee or official.
All right, thank you. Do we need to vote on that now?
You can do it whenever you'd like, sir.
Let's go ahead and do the vote now, then we'll finish up with our council comments.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis. Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. And we'll continue on with council comments, and we will go to Councilman Ayers.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Fars?
Nothing this evening, thank you, though.
All right, Councilman Folick?
Just real quick to echo the congratulations to Don and Cameron Decuna for their awards tonight, and to Rudy and Chris Mastrino for the recognition for Employees of the Year. And also, real quick, I believe it was two blue letters ago, but to recognize Sergeant Tom Valerie, Officer Jared Fraley, Officer Phil Schaefer, and Officer Rich Summers, or Summer, all four of them were recognized back in the beginning of November by the Hundred Club of Dayton as the Officer of the Year, and that was for their actions back before the airshow this year with the arrest of the subject at a local business that had a substantial amount of firearms and ammunition on their person, so congratulations to those gentlemen for those honors that they received earlier this month. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
I'll just echo the same as far as the Distinguished Citizens Awards and the Employee of the Year Awards, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing this evening.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No comments, Your Honor.
All right, and I have no further comments, so at this time, this meeting is adjourned. Not adjourned, we're going to executive session. See how fast their heads just start?